Like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Monroe Planning Commission. It is March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five at seven P M. Hannah, will you please do roll call?
I'd be happy to. Commissioners present and establishing a forum. Commissioners Falk, Blair, Dawkins, Lockhart, Lo, Patrino, and Walsh.
We have two brand-new commissioners that we are also going to introduce tonight. Go ahead and just introduce yourself and where your.
My favorite song.
Yes, you can tell me.
Tony Borg, I've lived in Monroe for thirteen years. The accent, people are wondering, is Jersey City, New Jersey, downtown Jersey City, New Jersey. I was on city council for twelve years, fired for four years, hospital commissioner for six years. The toughest job was P T A president for three years in a middle school. It truly is. What brought us to Monroe? My wife secured a job with the Monroe School District as principal of Selwood's Elementary School. I have four children, all of them graduated from Monroe High School. And anything else you'd like to know?
That's a lot. That's great. Thank you for having me.
Mary. Oh, gosh, here we go again after Tony. Okay, hi, my name is Mary Walsh. I've lived in Monroe for fifty-plus years, graduated from Monroe. My children graduated from Monroe with Brandy. Business owner, we have downtown over fifteen-plus years. And figured, you know what, I watched Monroe grow and decided it was some, you know, I'd love to step in and do something, and here I am. So hopefully, I'll be an asset. Thanks, you guys. I'm happy to be here.
Then it looks like we do not have general public comment sign-ups this evening. But so we will move on. We do have two public hearings tonight, and both will have other opportunities from the public. So our next is moving on to agenda item four point one, approval of minutes from the March tenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
I would to approve the minutes from the March tenth.
In second, we can see all in favor.
All right.
Point of order, I just want to make sure, were you here for a public hearing or just a public comment? I want to make sure you.
Just the year.
Period. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. So the motion passes and moving on to agenda item five point one, which will be our first public hearing. This is a public hearing about the proposed code amendments for the conversion of existing commercial buildings into residential uses. Leanne Barr will be talking about this with us tonight, and so I would like to officially open the public hearing.
Great.
Leanne, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Lockhart, for the introduction. As Chair Lockhart mentioned, I'm here for the public hearing tonight on the code amendments for converting existing building into residential uses. Since it's been a couple of weeks since I was here at the introduction, and we have some new commissioners with us and some members of the public, I'm going to go ahead and go through the full presentation tonight and just remind everyone where we are at with these code amendments. Since we last met, too, we've had, I've been to two boards and commission meetings besides planning commission, and we've made a minor change. Okay, so first thing I'd like to do is put in updated exhibit five, M M C twenty-two forty-two, divine standards into the exhibit packet tonight. I printed the page, it's just one page, the change, and we actually took down some of the code requirements and went back to a closer version to where we were. The first time I came and presented in front of you, and I'll go into the details on this a little bit later, but I wanted to draw your attention to the updated exhibit first. Okay, overview. So Washington State Legislature passed House Bill ten forty-two in July twenty-twenty-three, and it's intended to encourage the interior redevelopment of existing commercial and mixed-use buildings. House Bill ten forty-two defines existing buildings as anything that has been completed at least three years ago. The city is required to update our municipal code within six months of adopting or updated our comprehensive plan, which for the city of Monroe makes. As a reminder to the planning commissioners, when you're considering the code amendments tonight and in the future, to the city's development regulations, to keep in mind the goals of the Growth Management Act, they're outlined on the slide in front of you today. The proposed amendments are required based on the change in state law, but they're also, the changes will also help the city meet its housing needs while reducing urban sprawl and encouraging the redevelopment of underutilized buildings within city boundaries. As I go through my presentation tonight, you'll hear me hit on a couple of other of the planning goals that this set of code amendments will address. Okay, the requirements of House Bill ten forty-two. The first requirement is that cities have to allow a fifty percent greater residential density than what is in the underlying zone for any building that is being converted to residential entirely within the existing building number. So for instance, if you could get ten units on a piece of property, usually in a zone, if you're converting it entirely within an existing building, the city has to allow these fifteen units or can allow to fifteen units on their property. The remainder of House Bill ten forty-two is worded about things that the city shall not do and not in not add any extra regulations onto these types of projects. So the city cannot require any additional parking for these residential conversions. We can require that any existing parking on site be retained, though, we're proposing to do that. The city can't require any additional permitting requirements beyond what would be typical of a new building. We cannot, the city cannot impose any extra exterior design standards for these type of buildings. And we cannot require an additional transportation study or environmental review or C P R review. We can also not require that the entire building meet current energy codes. We can require the converted spaces, the energy code, but not the entire building. And finally, the city can't deny a project based on any existing non-conformities. So for instance, if you have a building that's sitting too close under today's code to say a side setback, and they wanted to convert the building into residential, we couldn't deny it purely because it's too close to that side yard setback. Okay, jumping back to that updated exhibit five in the design standards. This is to address the exterior design or architectural requirements. This is listed under the exemption section, so projects that are going through the conversion into residential are exempt from exterior design or architectural requirements. That is wording that's coming straight out of House Bill ten forty-two, and something that cities are required to do. The reason for the change in the last minute update here is we were having interior conversations between the wording of two of the sections in the bill, and just wanted to make sure that we're being very clear, and just went back and simplified the language a little bit. So it very, it reads basically the same as House Bill ten forty-two. So there's clarity for both developers and city staff about what requirements, design-wise, we can enforce on these types of projects. So what zones are going to be affected by the code amendments? House Bill ten forty-two is applies to zones that are mixed use or commercial and that also allow multifamily residential. So that, here in the city of Monroe, that's going to be our mixed-use general and our mixed-use neighborhood zone. It's going to be most of the downtown commercial, the residential east downtown and historic neighborhoods. And then in the general commercial zone, it's just going to be the North Kelsey or the Tierney Place overlay. So here's the current zoning map as it stands right now, but as you all know, this is just today. Planning manager Turtle Lo is going to be walking you through those code amendments later, but there's green arrows next to the zones that are going to be affected by these code amendments. We have the mixed-use neighborhood, which is in that light purple, mostly along Main Street and kind of coming around Village Way there. We have mixed-use general, which finishes out along Main Street and is up on one-seventy-ninth. Then the downtown commercial, which is the darker red color. And then within the pink general commercial, there's that little polka dot area, and that's going to be the North Kelsey Tierney Place overlay. I'm going to zoom in here on the downtown commercial. So these code amendments affect all of the downtown commercial except the promenade. The promenade is going to be that first floor buildings along Main Street. So the second floor building spaces and then the remainder of the downtown commercial will be affected by these code amendments. Okay, here's some examples of buildings that would qualify in the city of Monroe. I just went around and picked some buildings that looked like they could be a good candidate. We haven't been approached by anyone or anything. This is just me picking some buildings. These are examples in our mixed-use zone. And then here's some examples in our commercial zones. The yellow is going to be the downtown commercial spaces that qualify. No, it's just the second floor and not the main floor because that's within the promenade. And then the B E C U Dr. Gil Dentist Office Building is actually the only building in the North Kelsey overlay that will qualify because it's the only existing building that's over. Okay, dream big time. So what could these types of projects look like? When the city of Seattle was going through their code update process to come into compliance with House Bill ten forty-two, they did a design competition, and this is one of the submittals that came in. You can see on the left an existing office building, and then on the right, the conversion of what this particular design firm thought would be a good use of the space. You can see in this case, they chose not to keep the parking and convert it into wrecked park space. With the city of Monroe, we're proposing to keep the parking, but still you can see the other conversions in interior space that would make it more of a residential layout as opposed to its existing office layout. And then bringing it back down, so what's going to be probably the biggest challenge for these types of conversions? As with many things, it's the cost. Although the whole building wouldn't be expected to come up to current energy codes, any of the converted spaces would need to meet current energy codes. So after discussing with our building department, what is going to be some of those big ticket items? It's going to be your insulation, your windows, mechanical systems like H V A C, water and sewer systems, and then seismic upgrades, including or structural upgrades, excuse me, including potential seismic reinforcement. How many of these types of conversions would we expect to see? The city of Seattle is expecting about twelve of these conversions in the next seven years. The city of Bellevue is expecting less than five in the next seven years. So if you keep scaling back based on the population of Seattle, Bellevue, and then Monroe, this is not likely to be something we're going to see often, but it is another tool in our tool belt to help address housing in the city of Monroe. Summary, this is one of three upcoming housing-related code amendments. As I mentioned, it's just meant to be one tool in our tool belt. It's not meant to solve all of our housing needs, but it does help with the conversion of buildings and getting buildings at a higher density. The House Bill ten forty-two is a state mandated update, so it is something the city has to accomplish. And the deadline for finishing the code update is going to be June thirtieth of this year. So steps we've completed already. I was here with an introduction with you guys back in February. Since then, I took the conversation to the Community Human Services Advisory Board and then the Economic Development Advisory Board. The TRSAB board had some comments about the design requirements and parking specifically. They had some concerns, but as those are items that are specifically mentioned in the House Bill is something the city cannot enforce any extras on. We were not able to make any changes to the proposed code amendments based on those comments. The Economic Development Board was excited that property owners will have more options for their buildings and the potential of being able to convert them into residential that wasn't there before. They also had some questions about the potential for these to be short-term rentals, and theoretically, they could be short-term rentals, as those are not something the city currently regulates. They would just go through the permitting processes if it was any other housing conversion. No changes were proposed based on the conversations with TRSAB and E D A, just because their concerns were something specifically mentioned in the House Bill ten forty-two as something the city could not impose on these types of projects. Moving forward, tonight we're at our public hearing with the planning commission. Our goal is to adopt our needs and facts if all goes well tonight at your next meeting on the fourteenth, before moving on to city council, first with their P three committee, and then moving on to the public hearing, the city council, in adoption, all will be before our June deadline. Okay, and then I'll have to answer any questions you have from the presentation or anything about the proposed code amendments.
I have a question. On the general commercial, why is it only the overlay of the Tierney Place that qualifies?
Because that's the only general commercial zone that currently allows multifamily housing.
Today being the key.
Today being the keyword.
Okay, so if the rezon goes into effect and that changes some of it to different, like, when, when, when it change?
So that's phase two of the comprehensive plan implementation, getting at the overlay for all of that general commercial along U S two. That process, I don't have scheduled to start until after we get through what you're going to be hearing tonight, so that'll be starting in May or June and go through the end of the year. So in theory, the zoning will be changed by December. This will already be in place, and people can take advantage.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I understand correctly, code is being written for the type of landings, not for specific geographic area?
It is. Is being written for specific zones.
Yes, but not for geographic area, so that anytime property zoning change, that means the code, then that's where it'll be allowed.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we will move on to public testimony. Any member of the public who wishes to speak is allowed three minutes. And do I have a motion to open the public testimony portion of the hearing?
Is that rule? I'm sorry.
All right, moving in second in, all in favor? All right, I will call the speakers up one at a time, and just please give your first and last name and whereabouts in the city or what connection you have to this. Looks like we have Lisa Fisher.
Yes, I am Lisa Fisher.
Do you want to come up? If you come up here, then the microphones will pick you up.
Okay. We've lived here since two thousand nine. And it was soccer Thursday.
Oh, Mitchell.
Yeah, Mitchell. And but I guess, and we went to city planning years, like, years ago when I was at the middle school. And they were trying, they were planning for so many people coming in. I think it was like thirty thousand or something that was going to be. So I'm just kind of, I watch what's going on in cities. I watch it by the I five, so I guess I think about this little community and how it's growing. And so right now, this meeting, to be, to understand, this meeting is to be for the city, right? Not like the hills again, but mainly the city, what you're doing in the city, is that correct? Inside the city or the city outside? Okay, okay. That's why I'm, and, okay. And then the green spaces are not going to be, be developed, is that correct? The ones that are already here, the green spaces. It's going to be mainly the, the, the buildings that are present.
Well, we don't, we don't do a back and forth question and discussion at this time. We do have staff that are here who can probably answer some specific questions. And then also, this piece is for specifically for the public hearing involving the conversion for the existing commercial structures into residential uses.
Okay.
And so, like, yes, close up?
You might be here for the second public hearing, which is the rezoning.
Yes, my guess. Okay, and so I have you down to the second one, too. So we have another public hearing following this one.
Okay.
And so perhaps it'll be there, but again, with the questions, that'll be best directed to staff before, after, after the meeting, obviously, this evening. Because we, we just, it's just not what we typically do, the back and forth.
Okay.
That's probably through public comment.
Okay.
So do you have anything else that you would like to mention about the, specifically about the conversion of? No, okay, no problem. Thank you so much for coming today. Thank you.
And then next, is it Kathy? Or then Kathy?
Right, but I didn't have.
Oh, you were just signing in, so no public comment?
No.
Okay, no problem. That will conclude the public comments. So do I have a motion to close public testimony portion of the public hearing?
I'll move for close.
Thank you. Move in second in, all in favor? Do commissioners have any further deliberation on?
Yes. I think it's important for everyone to realize that we're not talking about any specific development tonight. But just because we zone an area a particular way does not necessarily mean there's going to be development there. So the bottom line is nothing is changing based on what we do here.
Then you're going to talk about rezoning now?
That'll be at the next public hearing. We have, we have to do the legal process of opening, listening to public closing.
All right, and so moving on to, if there is no further deliberation, I would like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Now, we did the public testimony part.
But there are no more to motion to close.
Thank you. Third second.
All second.
All right, all in favor? And then we have an action item. Is there a motion to direct staff? We have that up for on the screen.
I realized since we're about to add that slide, I'm going to pull it up right now.
We are now on D. I'll make the motion to move to direct staff to draft findings of fact and conclusion of law recommending that the Monroe City Council approve the proposed amendments to M M C Title twenty-two, Unified Development Regulations as required by House Bill ten forty-two for the conversion of existing structures into residential uses. Thank you. Move in second in, all in favor? All right, motion passes. And now, so moving on to item, agenda item five point two, which is a public hearing for the Monroe twenty forty-four Comprehensive Plans, Citywide Rezon and Associated Amendments to the Monroe His Code Title twenty-two Unified Development Regulations. So I will officially open the public hearing. And this one is going to be Kate Truitt. Thank you. Okay, so this evening, we're talking about the state wide rezone, which isn't as restrictive as the state statute that we must do code amendments, but it is somewhat set in stone because the city council adopted the Monroe twenty forty-four Comprehensive Plan in December of last year. And so before I start, I just want to let you know, Kelsey had sent me a question earlier today, and I did want to clarify. The city council excluded the proposed change for the Strawberry Hill neighborhood, which is by the hospital. They also excluded, there were five properties along Chain Lake Road that were proposed to go from residential to mixed use. So those are not under consideration. This is really rezoning all of the ones that the council included in that future random use map. So with that, next slide. Okay, so as you mentioned a little bit earlier with Brad's questions, this is phase one. This is the easy part of doing implementation of our Monroe twenty forty-four Comprehensive Plan. It is the city-wide rezone. As a refresher, all of the areas that are currently zoned residential four units per acre will be changing to residential seven units per acre. In all reality, most of Monroe was not developed at four dwelling units per acre. Most of developments in both the Frylands and then up along Chain Lake Road use a planned residential development process, which allowed thirty percent density bonuses. The other benefit of the R four is it's helping us achieve our residential population and housing allocations for twenty forty-four. Snohomish County also requires that we have six dwelling units per net acre for annexation, so we still have some areas that need to come into our city, and that's also recommended by the Growth Management Act. The next area is our northwest corner. Again, this was discussed going from residential to mixed-use general. When we were looking at the comprehensive plan, the area that we were really struggling with was enough land for employment. So this is kind of a compromise where you can have both residential at higher densities as well as mixed or commercial professional office restaurant. The next change is along the south side of one-seventy-ninth between S R five twenty-two and Main Street. This would be a continuation of the mixed-use zoning above. I did misspeak when I gave this presentation back in January. In my head, I had this as mixed-use neighborhood commercial, which allows fewer options. This is actually mixed-use general, so it really is the whole meal deal of professional office, commercial, residential. The next area that we were talking about is the properties on North Kelsey, known as the Smith Property. Again, this was more of a correction, but it also helps us get at that employment number. In nineteen, in twenty nineteen, it was changed from general commercial to multifamily or high-density residential. This is changing it back to the general commercial, more in line with how the property is being used. But I do want to also clarify, when that was state roofing, the property was zoned industrial. That transition happened in two thousand four from industrial to general commercial. So most of the uses are either legally non-conforming or like the new State Farm, thank you, State Farm, that business will now be legal with this code change. And we have been in conversations with the Smith Brothers. You think this was one of their requests, and again, it was a win-win. We needed employment. They wanted to have a change back to what it was. The next one is that small one where Hannah's circling right now, residential four to mixed-use neighborhood. Again, this is more of a correction. That's the food bank. All the properties in that one are city-owned land. And when I started in twenty-two, we were looking at a code change to allow food banks in all residential seven zones, which really wasn't what the city was trying to achieve. It was for the food bank to do an expansion, so this is a more appropriate correction. And then finally, the last one, actually, there's two more. The last one that you've heard about before is removing the transportation zone. That is only for U S two, the U S two bypass S R five twenty-two and the Santa Fe or the Burlington Northern, Santa Fe Railroad. That's all right of way. It's very restricted in what you can do there. There's a better way to handle it than have the overlay or, excuse me, the zone, which allowed uses that we won't allow. So we're, we're trying to make a correction as well. The last one I do want to bring your attention to is at the southwest corner. This R four to R seven, it's not in the city yet. This is the Connor Annexation, and this is a timing issue. Amy Bright is the project planner. She ju, she's taking it to city council tomorrow night. Yeah, tomorrow night for public hearing, assuming that the council blesses it. It will go to the Snohomish County Boundary Review Board. The pre-annexation was done in twenty twenty. It was excluded when the city did a, an overwired rezoning in our urban growth area. And the way our code brought it, it's. And the way our code wr- is, is worded is that it defaults to the lowest residential zone. So at the time, that was the residential four. Because we are going through the city wide rezone, we want to make sure we're capturing this. So when it is annexed, it is consistent with the rest of the R seven zones, since the R four is great way. So that's a big overview of what you're looking at. Um, background, again, a refresher. So we just completed our ten-year periodic update to our comprehensive plan. And that shifted our planning horizon from twenty thirty-five to twenty forty-four. Doing some of the initial analysis, we determined that we did not have enough land capacity within our city limits and our urban growth area where annexations can occur with the existing zoning. The way the, the Growth Management Act and Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2050 and the county-wide planning policies all work is that you need to figure out can you accommodate without expanding your boundaries? And so what the city looked at are, are there ways that we can increase our density and accommodate housing and employment by making some minor changes to the city zoning, which is what we're talking about this evening? Again, um, but we had, we did not have enough to accommodate that twenty forty-four forecast. And. Kind of what Leanne was talking about, um, when we're looking at changes to our comprehensive plan and then the implementing development regulations, the planning commission, council need to keep in mind those planning, uh, the growth management, planning, or excuse me, planning. Yeah, policies, goals, my apologies. And so, for example, how, how this proposal is going to help you meet this is we're not asking to expand our urban growth area. We're trying to accommodate within the existing city limits. By doing that, we're not, uh, we're not supporting sprawl because we're increasing density again within our boundaries as they exist today. The transportation and utility planning were all based on the future land use map. That is the reason that we're doing this rezone tonight. Um, some of the other ones, the citizen participation, I did want to let you all know. Even though this is a legislative process, we did send postcards to all of the property owners potentially impacted by the city wide rezone. The only one that was not included was the Connor Annexation. We reached out to that property owner last Friday when we were, had a conversation with our attorney. They are supportive, so, um, we feel like we've reached out to our public. Again, this is the result of a two-year outreach for the comprehensive plan, phase one of implementation. All right, and so again, this is just so you can see the differences. The current zoning map is on your left. The proposed changes are highlighted on the right. The lightest yellow is the residential four that will be transitioning to the R seven. We do have some pockets of that residential seven already in our city limits. Um, thank you, and then some in the downtown area. Um, the mixed use again at the northwest corner. Um, the mixed use on one seventy-nine. And I do want to also clarify, again, thank you, Kelsey, for your questions. Um, there are parks in both the Frylands area, and there are a few parks up, um, north of Chain Lake Road. The reason I have that note in there, that the, the park, the parks that are zoned park, that's not changing. You'll notice that in the foothills, I don't have that note, even though those, there are parks. Those are part of the HOA. They're privately owned. So the only ones that I want to specifically denote, because it's just easier than having to go in and stencil out the parks I with my mapping, I just wanted to make sure those parks aren't changing. They're going to remain park designation. It's just, uh, for ease of illustrating the zone changes. And then to complement the map, uh, we do need to make changes to the Monroe Municipal Code. The first one is Chapter twenty-two fourteen, that's zoning maps in districts. That will be, uh, striking out the residential four units per acre as well as the transportation zone. In Chapter twenty-two sixteen, that's our single-family residential zone, removing all references again to residential four. And then the final one is Chapter twenty-two thirty, and that's completely eliminating that chapter. All of the strike-through edits are in your packet this evening. And so before I get to the recommendations, do you have any questions for me?
All right, Kelsey. Um, kind of like I was bringing previous questions where these are changing so that there's a potential to do these things. Um, they use right now, they can still use the properties where, the way they are right now.
Yeah, so, um, and I'm gonna clarify, the residential four to seven, there is no change in use. What changes is the density, yeah, which is the density, uh, the bulk standards that actually will benefit, sorry, will benefit those property owners in that sense. The ones in the sense that are seven, the, um, uh, lot coverage improving service is higher because you're trying to squeeze more onto that lot. The inverse is true, well, not inverse, but it's different for those going from residential to mixed use. If you have a standalone detached house, that becomes a legal non-conforming structure. So you continue using it, but you cannot do a detached residential subdivision. Instead, you would need to do townhomes, or you'd need to do a mixed use with commercial and residential. So that's, that's the change. Um. That's true with any, any of the changes for residential to mixed use. Did that answer your question? And there are no, there are no proposals. This is literally trying to implement this plan that we just adopted in December.
Um, I know you've answered this before, but looking at the map and it's partially for the two new people and for myself to remember, um, the highway to general commercial turning to residential. Where, what's the rest of the process for that? Because for our outreach, that's what we had heard a lot about. We were unable to do it so far in this process, but I know it's part of like stage two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, what we wound up instead of having two maps in the comprehensive plan, one that shows the specific changes to the future land use map and then an overlay that says all of the general commercial along US two and all of the mixed use along Main Street, so the items that we had specifically identified. There are policies adopted in the comprehensive plan. So phase two is going to be that challenging work to figure out, how do we how do we bring in the residential and how do we, uh, encourage development in the downtown for that gets at what we're trying to achieve? So that will begin in, um, May or June, when this ends, the, I, I, there's still another code, another code piece I need to do for critical areas, so it's a balancing act to get both of these done. That's when we'll be addressing that, and it will be, um, it could potentially be as simple as we take the turny place North Kelsey overlay work and see if we can broaden that to all of the US two corridor. The downtown Main Street, that, that's going to be a whole different process. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. On the, uh, piece of property, uh, along North Kelsey and, uh, Elizabeth Street.
Yeah.
It's like, the use of it, uh, there's a part that goes down to Elizabeth Street. It's all fenced in, but it's not part of the rezone. And I just want to make sure that was intentional. And so that will be still, um, legal, but non-conforming to zoning. Correct that little piece that hangs down there.
You are correct. Um, I had, I had reached out to the Smith brothers during the comprehensive plan, just making sure that we were doing what I thought they had asked. Because the corner lots, um, of North Kelsey and Elizabeth, as well as the next two in are also owned by the Smith brothers. My question was, did you want me to bring that general commercial all the way down to Elizabeth Street? Um, the comp plan got adopted, and then I finally had an opportunity to talk to them, and they clarified they only want these two properties to be returned to the general commercial that they were before. They do, um, they're looking at potential opportunity to take advantage of that residential twenty-five units per acre for the properties along Elizabeth at a future date.
And the other thing is going from, it was interesting looking at the comparison to R four and R seven.
Yeah.
The only difference is the density.
Yes.
Which I approved. I support that for a long time. Um, and that, the, and the, and the, um, the coverage going from fifty percent to sixty percent, but that is still a result of the small houses. So sixty percent of a small lot is less square footage than fifty percent of an R four lot. I did the math.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So it might have a benefit of small houses and less expensive houses since it's less material.
You would think that that's not what we've seen.
No, no, I appreciate it. It's all depends what material is.
Right.
And, and the quality and all that, but generally speaking, usually smaller houses are less expensive than larger houses.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, right? I understand.
We do.
Nope, it's supply and demand, not what the zoning said.
Well, that I do want to clarify, in that zone, we do not have a minimum density. So it has the potential of a developer coming in for a property owner and developing less than seven units per acre. Um, we only have a minimum density in our R twenty-five and then in the uh, mixed use of a, a minor, uh, minimum maximum.
Yes, this is, okay, back to the Smith brothers. Where is that on Elizabeth Street? I mean, so they, that little piece that you're talking about, so they could actually put in twenty-five?
So the zoning, um, the current zoning of the property, I wish we had blown up. Actually, if you go in your packets. No, it's not a good picture either of the thing here. So along, along North Kelsey.
Okay.
There's a dividing line or the north property line. There's a split between the two parcels that the Smith brothers would like rezone, and it's consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Below that, there is a line of residential.
Homes.
Yeah, there's a mix of homes, apartments, and the parking lot that Tony was mentioning. My understanding, talking to I don't remember.
One of us.
Yeah, um, they had mentioned years ago, they had talked to one of the planners about the potential of developing multifamily or some high residential on those parcels that are in the R twenty-five. So they are not interested in. Yeah, they just want those two parcels.
So it'd be in the back closer to Elizabeth?
No, it's on Elizabeth. So.
It is on.
So the zoning does not go all the way down to Elizabeth. There's a break line, it's kind of like a giant triangle.
Okay.
And that's all the, that will be transitioning back to the general commercial, um, pre-two thousand nineteen.
If I may, to go down Elizabeth Street of North Kelsey, on the corner there, you have a single family.
Right, something.
Yes, and then there's the, the lot, no, no, then there's the lot fenced in all the way to what would be the sidewalk, if they had a sidewalk. And they use it for storage, the Smith brothers, and then on the other side, it's about seventy-five feet long. And then on the other side of the fence is, uh, apartment buildings. Um, but also some of the Smith brothers.
Yes. Okay. Yep. No, I agree. Any other comments or questions? And then it looks like our members of the public have departed. So, um, I believe that means that we can skip the.
Yes, like testament, correct?
Okay, yeah. So moving on to. The public testimony, okay. Um, then I would like to make a motion to open the public testimony, testimony portion of the hearing.
I still move to open up the public. Or something, uh, public.
Okay, moved in second in, all in favor?
Fine.
And then, since there are no members of the public here in person, I would like a motion to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Okay?
All seconded.
All right, all in favor? Is there any further commission deliberation? Nope, all right, then I would like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
All second, right, all in favor? All right, and then, uh, looking for action on this as well. So, because I would, uh, make the motion to move to direct staff to prepare findings and conclusions recommending that Monroe City Council approve Monroe two thousand forty-four Comprehensive Plan, Citywide Rezone. Is there a second? All in favor?
All the question, so at the motion phase and second, we said, council allows you to make comments on the motion?
Discussion. Yeah.
So and then, then it is well discussed, then we can vote for the vote. Am I correct?
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Oh, all right, then, all in favor? All right, motion passes. We have no old business tonight, so moving on to agenda item seven point one, planning commission seating arrangement. So. This is more of a formality. Um, it's in the planning commission rules and procedure that, um, at our first meeting, we're supposed to vote on a seating chart. And commissioners can choose by their seniority. Um, I included in your agenda packet the seniority of commissioners, um, but I also provided a suggested seating chart, um, that you are all sitting according to tonight, just so you can get a feel for it. So, um, if you don't have any problems with the proposed seating chart, then I would just ask for a motion to adopt it as proposed. We can also discuss it. Um, and choose new seats according to seniority. It's really up to you guys.
We did it to separate.
Is there anyone who wants a change in seating arrangements?
Change the seats.
I know, I didn't give you guys your soft seats tonight. I'm just saying.
I like sitting to the right of Melanie, but I also like the seat. I'd always sit right here, so. And I think I'll stay here.
Since you're ice, though.
Yeah, but you are, you have somewhere to go. I like.
I'm flexible, so if anybody wants to change, then.
Honestly, this is the first term I've ever been asked where to sit.
It's the first time I've been asked, too, and I'm one of the most senior brand units, seeing who we've never been asked this before.
This is usually more of a thing. Or I think they actually get, uh, and then. They get to peep, it's, it's, yeah.
Well, you still have to remain without seating.
All right. If that's the case, is there a motion to approve the seating arrangement? I'll move to adopt the arrangement as proposed. So is that good?
So I do.
All, all in favor? Thanks, guys. Thanks for. All right, and then moving on to agenda item seven point two, which is also Hannah. We have the community developed February twenty twenty-five monthly report.
Okay. So, the February twenty twenty-five community development report. We'll start at the top. Um, we have four single-family permits issued in February, three TIs, and twenty residential building permits issued. A hundred and eighteen inspections in, not January, February. Uh, we have six code enforcement cases opened and eight cases closed, so both of those are down from January. A hundred and ninety-six business licenses. We had zero pre-application meetings in February. The project highlight for the month was the Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue Station Thirty-One shop addition. So, um, they have constructed, uh, three thousand square foot maintenance shop addition to their back buildings here. Uh, the project has been in the works since a pre-app meeting back in twenty twenty-three with the first building permit submitted in October.
with the first building permit supplemental in October of twenty twenty-three. Building permits were issued in January of twenty-four and civil engineering permits were issued in November of twenty-three. Um, the civs, uh, were kind of tricky because there was an existing water main that they had to reroute. So that made things kind of difficult. Um, the final building inspection was approved in February.
As I shared, I was a fire for two thousand two to two thousand six. And they used to work outside, they didn't have a shack.
Hmm.
They've been running one for decades, two school years, at least. And, um, and so, and the other thing, it's a great business for my love was the fire department from all over Snohomish County, from King County, all come here to have their fire, their trucks serviced.
I didn't know that. Um, on our project page, there are no real updates in February. On down. It's our building. Some updates from the building department. Um, we're continuing to work with the Davenport Group, uh, which we discussed last month for our project highlight. That's for our new permitting system. Kate's been doing a lot of the heavy lifting on the planning side of things, giving them information for, um, the implementation on that. Um, we are still down our building permit technician position, uh, but we have made an offer to a really great applicant and we have like two more days left for her to accept it, so fingers crossed. Um, our plans reviewer Ted took a building official role with another city, so we are also down that position. So our building department is pretty empty right now. Um, but we are working with our plans review consultant to, um, send a lot of our projects for review for them. Um, Kevin in code enforcement has been, uh, working on removing non-permitted state signs throughout the city. Um, for temporary signage, you just get a free sticker, that's your permit with those. Here are our new business licenses for the month. Any questions on those? Kate has gone in and updated the comprehensive plan section. Um, and it's discussing the citywide rezon that we had the public hearing for tonight. Our planning staff have also gone in and updated, uh, the code amendment section of the monthly report. So Leanne updated the conversion of existing structures that we had the public hearing for. There is also information on the unit lot subdivisions that Anita brought to you at our last meeting. Uh, there's some information on the interim R seven zoning ordinance that Anita is working on. And Amy, uh, updated the accessory dwelling unit code amendments that, uh, we will have a public hearing for in April. I'm gonna touch really briefly on that interim, the interim R seven. So it's part of that suite that, um, Leanne was talking about, one of three of the housing projects. Accessory dwelling units is another, we know lots of division. The middle housing is that bigger project that we're looking at, that is the townhome, um, triplex, fourplex cottage. Um, apartments. We are requesting the council take action to adopt an interim ordinance, partly because the city council had asked for mixed-use housing in the Monroe thirty annexation. Snohomish County actually approved that for the boundary review board, so that's part of the process that we're going through and to get that finally adopted by the city of Monroe. But it will come back to you for full review. So both the interim regulations and then the full meal deal, uh, middle housing project. So you'll see this a couple of times, this current process is skipping over you, going straight to council, but then it will come back for full review. And annexations, I don't think there was any updates here from the January report to now. Now, we actually just touched on both of them, yeah. Connor is going to council tomorrow night and Monroe thirty. Been approved by the. Thank you. Moving on to discussion by commissioners and staff. Who go ahead and start down at the end with Commissioner Patriona.
Thank you, Chair Lockhart. I want to welcome our new members, great to have you here. We were down to five and we were starting to get worried. Welcome. I want to report, uh, back to this, uh, a very positive report about the, uh, zipling work going on down in here at the view. I anticipated a complete war zone, but they're doing a good job. They, they went and they did the, my next door neighbor and didn't disturb anything. Didn't disturb the plant, didn't disturb the, uh, street. Clean up their mess. So next they come to my house and see what they do there. They've done a great job, uh, um, locating, utility locating. We haven't had a mishap, so that's.
They get a water line today.
I was just gonna say. There was a nice video of some water.
Yeah, just, it was just today.
That is private?
It is.
Yeah.
I'll show you the video after the meeting.
She said contractor, it's not.
But up until today. Up until today.
Well, Ranger views now, we were driving something.
All right, moving on to Commissioner Blair. Do you have anything that you participated in that you think the rest of people know about? Or, um, sometimes it's just nothing.
Yeah, I'm happy I am to be here, very. Thank you. Well, no, I have to say I agree with him with, um, zipling, well, until today. Yeah, but I live, I live down there too, and how are they gonna tear everything up and just leave it? And you know, you could, you know, when they pick out your lawn and they stick it back on and then they're gonna go back together. It looks great, cause they're headed to my house next. I saw the lines and I'm kind of, cause I just put in a new lawn and I'm thinking, oh, oh, so we'll see what happens. I mean, if they do, but they did.
Grass will grow.
Yeah, well, if they break the water line, hey, there you go. That's it. Thank you.
Again, uh, welcome to our talk hall, talk hall mission. And, um, look forward to working with you guys. I'd like to have seven hours again. And, uh, here's some other, uh, opinions and things that we're doing, that'd be wonderful. And, um, Kate, I gotta tell you, every time you talk and you just pull up these dates and these things, I do think, I'm so amazed. How you keep it all straight and together, so thank you on all that. And then, uh, one thing I kind of learned this weekend, so, um, I was out of town. And so I went on, on Friday evening to check my agenda, and so it triggered. What'd you say it triggered?
It, it was the alarm for our IT department thought that somebody was trying to access her, uh, email account. And so, because I was not able to communicate, they changed her password.
I was gonna get into the weekend, so anyone I knew from Kate that I needed to find out this morning, how to get back, you know, get a new password or whatever.
Yeah.
And so I did talk to IT and I found out that, um, I don't know if you guys noticed or anything, but anybody, anybody was works for the, for Monroe, if you leave, uh, uh, the city to access anything, they're supposed to know ahead of time. So I had no idea, I said, oh, okay, so if you are going and you don't want to get locked out.
Is it on a different device or just your.
No, I got.
They probably saw a different.
Florida, so they thought.
Hacker, hacker, hacker.
Yeah, that's actually, that's, that's what they thought, it was late, it was like four thirty-five Friday afternoon.
For me, it was later. On my agenda, I can keep it fun for that weekend, so. Anyway, just so you guys know, if you're large or not, the IT note, so easy, easy and, you know.
Good job, I too.
Commissioner Blair. Um, there's been a lot more activity, people walking around downtown, cause it's getting nicer out. So that's always a good sign of the community and connection. Um, down at the old football field, the, there's, um, a group that has access to use that now for a football and cheer. So there's been a lot more activity down, um, in that part of downtown, in the open spaces down there. And same with, um, the Frank Wagner Field Campus, they're installing a cricket field down there. And so I, it's just neat to see so many more people out and about and using, uh, open space. Um, you know, I always want us to have more of that. And being able to access the school district, giving access is, since they have so much open space, that's helpful, but anywhere we can get it. Um, one thing I want to put on your guys' radar, it's also more of a, right now it's a school district thing, but, um, they are planning on asking to partner with the city of Monroe, if they haven't already asked the mayor. Uh, there's gonna be a youth mental health and family awareness, um, event that's being planned for, uh, May. And so it's something that we're hoping that it'll be a resource that even after the event, um, city staff or school district staff or any of us could, uh, help teens and families and teens or any, anyone in the community that's, uh, needing mental health resources. So, um, I'll be giving you updates about that when we have more information.
So in the memorial field, is where the, the access?
Yeah.
The football field you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Football field, there's about several names, but yes. With the concession stand, they've even like done some work inside there, so it's, so it's safe. And, um, be around there, so yes, very cool.
I have a question. Is there any plan for the baseball field and is it still there?
The school district property?
From what I know, the school district owns that and it's not, there's no changes, uh, proposed to it at this time.
Does he says they have three, it feels like a high school. Yes, first of all, I can thank all of you for going extra mile to make me feel welcome, I do appreciate that greatly, especially Seth. Um, thank you for bringing everything about to help, I don't get to high school. It's called down because of, uh, walkers three different times as an adult, not when I was in high school. It was a little bit one to that, because of deaths of teenagers and the question surrounding it. It's been something that I've been advocating when I was a commissioner at the hospital, that, um, we don't realize how much stress teenagers go through at a time in their life when they have very few skills to deal with that stress. We're talking about them going to college, what you want to do, you'll figure out your own sexuality. And, um, so anyway, I'm glad to hear, and thank you for giving your attention.
All right, I'll go ahead and go, just because you're going in order. But you want to go first, I'm gonna go first, yeah, okay. Um, also, thank you to staff for all the, you know, we've been over all the public hearing information, let's go over it again. So that we're, um, new commissioners are kind of a little more up to speed with that too, and they know a lot of its formalities with what was already in the plan and then also with, um, changes required by the state. But it's still, you know, it's very informative every single time. And of course, welcome to our new commissioners, super glad to have you. I'm really excited, all seven of us are here tonight, this doesn't happen very often. Zoom is very convenient and I'm glad everybody, you know, we have people who tune in and, and log in from Zoom, but to have everybody here is really nice. Um, my comment was actually gonna be on the zipling fiber thing and the lovely water fountain video that I saw on social media today, but I'm excited, I'm in the neighborhoods, uh, one of the neighborhoods that's marked with the utility flags and stuff in the yard, so I think I'm a little further down the list of, of, of work. But, um, I've gone around the neighborhood, seen it all happen. And then Currie View Park is coming together really quick. And I, I know that they just had, you know, the groundbreaking a couple of weeks ago. Um, and that it's scheduled to be done at the end of April, which is a quick turnaround, but I was still caught off guard. And I drove by today, I'm like, man, it almost looks like a full playground already, cause it's going up really fast. And my kids are seeing it and they're ridiculously excited, cause we're pretty much just, we've got houses between us and the park, but it's like almost a straight line to the park for us, so it'll be nice for my kids and other community kids. It's a big green space right now, so I'm glad that it's being expanded, um, to be a park that will likely be utilized even more than it already is. So, um, and then I think the only other thing I was gonna comment on is, um, myself and Commissioner Blair, as well as, um, uh, uh, council member Fisher are on the school district's, um, facilities advisory um, board that has just started, and we've had one meeting so far, we have another meeting, um, this week. And it's just kind of the very beginning stages of looking at all of the different facilities that the school district owns. And so there will be, obviously it impacts the city and our, uh, the residents, because kids are going to the schools. And, um, also it's eventually going to get to the point of, you know, do we need to go to the taxpayers, um, for, you know, a bond? And, uh, bond money for new buildings or updated buildings. Um, and so just the, looking at the, starting to look at that and, um, it's a very large committee, which is nice, there's a lot of different voices, a lot of, um, input. And, uh, I know information about it will probably be up on the school district website for people to follow along with what's discussed and everything. Um, and so that's been, it was, um, I'm really happy to be serving on that as just a parent in the community, as well as to have, um, a couple familiar faces with, with the city there too. And I know that the district will continue to partner with the city and, and most of the things it does and stuff, so. Um, yeah, other than that, hopefully everybody's enjoying what will hopefully be nice weather again. Today, there was a flood warning, but it's supposed to be nice coming up this week, so hopefully everybody's ready for it. Commissioner Duffins?
Yeah, I heard it's supposed to be seventy tomorrow, but I haven't confirmed that online, so. I went to Alborland Park today and it was flooded, like it was all the way up to the bridge, there's ducks in places I've never seen them. We had to turn the dogs and we'd go to the dog park. Um, I am going to an event this weekend at the fairgrounds called the Oddball Emporium of the weird sprung, and it's free, um, so I'm excited to see what that has in store. I think it's just games, um, seems like something for kids.
That's really cool.
I haven't heard, it just looks very strange, I'm really excited.
A lot of really cool vendors.
What's it called?
The Oddball Emporium of the Weirds from, and it's totally free, uh, according to online stuff. So I'm excited, I haven't been to a lot of events down there. Um, I thought that tonight was awesome, we've coming to the end of like some, a lot of our work. I, just like reading our agenda, I'm like, oh, I, I recognize this, I recognize this. Just like remembering from the beginning to the end, I know it's not ready, uh, we're, we're close, right? But like, it was just kind of cool to not be so, um, you know, to know what we're doing, it feels good. So we're together, and thank you for taking us through all of this. So, it's kind of cool, so you guys will get there on that. I remember coming on and not knowing what I was doing, but it seems like you both have a lot of experience to bring, so welcome to the, to the commission. And.
So you may notice that City Hall is taking more shape. Uh, I want to give you a heads up, and I know that, I know that, um, planning commissioner will receive, uh, an email or, or an invite. But the rhythm cutting is planned for, uh, July seventh. That doesn't mean we're moving in on July seventh, it's July, we're more likely to have better weather. It's an outdoor event, so they went ahead and scheduled it, we don't have a, an, an official move-in date yet. By July, we may have a better idea, so, um, but just, just, uh, keep your eyes open for that, for that invite that's gonna go out. One other project that, that I wanted to mention that is, um, in discussion, it's about downtown. In discussion, it's about downtown, we have city bought the New Bank Building, and, and have, the city's been working on. How to implement the festival lot, you may have heard that, that term, which was actually embedded in the downtown master plan in two thousand. Five, so it's, so, so it's twenty years, it's, it's been, it's been, it, it was never, it never had a location, but it had sort of an idea. So that, that is what the city is looking to implement at that site. There was a presentation at council last Tuesday, um, about four very general concepts. That, uh, were initially presented to, to, to council, and. If you're interested, you can go and look at that, at. That agenda, that, that agenda bill, um, and see this, we'll be taking, we'll be taking back some revised concepts, because there was some. Very specific comments from council, and, uh, we'll be taking that back to the, to the P three committee. And then putting together a public engagement process to, to get input from, from the public. Not exactly sure how that'll go, but. Imagine you like see a booth with the city and, and some maps and, you know, meeting today, I was just like, yes, this is all sounding very true. But it was a great process for the, for the comp plan, so, um, we get to do that, and. EDA, the Economic Development Advisory Board, is, is, is the, the group that has been. Not necessarily in the lead, but that's where a lot of the comments and a lot of things have been presented now, but it will be, it will go to. Um, I, I don't know if it'll, if it'll be anything that'll come directly to planning commission, because it's not. We're not looking at making zoning changes or, or development, not regulation changes, but just, that's why I mentioned it, because it's something that's going on at the council, I think people would have, would have an interest in it. And that's.
Um, I'll say something about that, I've heard a lot of comment, um, about people really wondering what's going on down there, and. There, it's like the building is starting to kind of look. Like it's falling apart, you know.
A couple of windows have been broken.
Right. Right, and they're getting kind of, um. They'd like to see something happen, I know that, I, I hear a lot of that, actually, I, same with me, because it's at the other end of town.
Yeah.
So it's kind of like. It'd be nice, do you know, when they're going to start doing something.
So we should, we should know more on this, on the schedule, or at least a general schedule, when we would go out. And, and elicit public, what public input, and, and how we'll do it, and we'll do it in a variety of ways, but, um, I, I will pass that along to, uh. Maybe to council tomorrow night, we'll, we have a P three meeting tomorrow, so, uh, if it comes up in discussion, then I'll certainly pass that on to.
The good thing is, um, the park down there. But there have been some cars that have been.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this kind of left there and. You know, maybe somebody's sleeping in them, I don't know, but.
There is, it's been. It's been sort of a, it, it was an ongoing issue before the city bought it, and, and, and it's, it sort of pops up and. Then the city has to, so.
Is, is the city able to kind of enforce that more now that it's city property?
We can, I mean, because it's, but it's, it's, um, it, it really doesn't.
Couple of challenges.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't really have any more, it, it, it's public property, so there's. It actually opens it up to a little bit more, um, trespassing. Individuals from public property is a little bit different than private property, but, but that's what, that's how the city is.
Especially for a pocket like that. The store on the downtown, appreciate having additional parking.
They do, because that's a big thing downtown.
Oh, yeah.
I always thought the festival lot was the building right behind the, um, post office. That not.
So.
This whole time I've been imagining that one, it's the, the one that was the tobacco store before. For the one that's all boarded up.
I don't believe that there's ever been an actual designation of what the festival lot.
But the city owns that bank too, and.
The other part, are you talking about the, the little chiropractor office right behind it, little white? It's between the Union Bank building and the post office.
I thought they stopped the Union Bank.
They did.
Oh, okay.
There's two, but there's two, there's two properties and two buildings, because there's, there's another building right behind. Union Bank, that's between Union Bank. And the post office, it's a little, it's not a very large building, it used to be a chiropractor office, the city bought both of those, and it's. I, I, that building is probably going to be, is probably torn down.
So we have, or the city has that one, and then that whole building at the festival lot, or that, that building, not the cities that you're talking about.
I'm not sure, I know what building you're referring to.
But Union Bank and the festival lot is the same.
So you're talking about that building that's next to the taco truck that's all boarded up, that's looking back, or that the Union Bank is looking back?
The city does not own that building.
The Union Bank.
Okay.
Oh, you're talking about the smoke shop that's on the other end of town.
Yeah, it's all boarded up and.
Yes.
It's a huge building too.
It is, that's another topic, and, yeah.
Okay.
But the city, the city doesn't, the city does not.
So the Union Bank and festival lot are the same.
Yes. Festival lot is the proposal, the, the city.
It is confused.
No question.
That's all.
Um. Well, happy things tonight, thank you.
Yeah. I will say, on the topic of City Hall, I went on a tour of City Hall the other day. And I'm so excited for our new council chambers, it's already so pretty in there, and like. We're going to have those big, giant, beautiful windows, and I just, I can't wait for us to have our forever home, and for us to have our meetings in there.
Are we allowed to set these up?
I don't have to deal with that house anymore, I don't have to move children, it's going to be great.
Don't have to accidentally have a double booking.
Exactly. So I just think it's going to be a really beautiful space, and, um, we had a couple of meetings that, uh. It was sort of like I got to have my dream. IT wishlist for what we were going to have in the council chambers, so it's going to be great.
We'll have to do the seating chart all over again.
We are going to have to do the seating chart.
We're going to be on a platform like last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's way bigger.
It's like big and kind of rounded.
Yeah.
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 Nice.
It actually looks very good.
Is there enough space for people to come in this time?
Yeah.
We only have like five chairs.
Yeah. The chambers are very open. Right, any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.